Okay, I call our meeting to order. I will begin with our public participation. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of Commonwealth in Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the select board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. For the public's information, this meeting is being recorded. I will start with announcements, which I have a few. First, I'd like to say congratulations to Smith Academy graduating class, which graduated Friday. I think that's great. Good luck on your endeavors. I also like to announce that Garrett Berry has decided to take another position in another town. Garrett was an exceptional employee. We want to thank him for his work here in Hatfield over the years and wish him the best. His last day is officially June 20th and is presently using summer end leave. I would like to send him a letter of thanks, if that's okay with my colleagues.
Absolutely.
Okay. Saturday, June 14th is coming Saturday's Flag Day. There'll be a ceremony on the proper way to retire the American flag. It will be at the Lions Club and Pavilion at 6:00 PM. There's a drop-off box here in Town Hall if you want to retire your public flag, your American flag. Public's invited to attend this small but important ceremony. I know my new colleague Luke has been there the last few years and participated in that ceremony, and I thank him for doing that. I'd like to move to the next announcement. Tree cutting is finally starting on June 9th, which it just began. They moved equipment up, according to Tony, and the watershed area, there'll be trucks and equipment. We'll be seen on Rocks Road, Reservoir and Mountain Road. And it's estimated to take one month, and it's a project I had hoped for over the last few years. It will help protect our forest by doing partials, different pieces as we go along, and that money will help to clean up the invasive species and hope it will continue and keep our watershed healthy. The Summer Concert Series is this Friday outside here, June 13th. The band is Jamalot. It's 5:30 to 7:30. Bring your own wine chairs and snacks and please police up your area when you leave to keep it clean for the next Summer Concert Series. With that, that is my announcements. I don't know if my colleagues have any.
Nope.
No, sir.
Okay, then with that being said, we'll move to public forum. Do we have anybody here for public forum?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yeah. I have two things I want to cover this evening with the board. Fifty years ago, I did I own Hatfield Printing and Publishing. We did the first town report for the town for 1974. We did them for probably two decades after that. Then we started doing other printing work in the town. One of the things we specialized in was decals for the transfer station, and we developed a type of decal that you could apply inside a car window. Upon doing that, we really grew on that, and we do probably 40 to 50 towns in Western Mass doing these window decals. So every, over the 30-plus years, we'd submit a proof to the town. And this year, as we used to do it to Wellman Key and this year to Karen, to, we keep track of the colors. So they not only don't conflict with other towns, but don't repeat for a cycle of six to seven years. Karen emailed back, said that she wasn't, for some reason, was no longer handling this and that it was going to the treasurer's office. I went over to talk to Tammy. Tammy said, "Well, we're not sure what's going on with this right now. We're straightening this out." This, of course, had to do with the sudden departure of the DPW director. So I said, "Well, I'll keep checking in with you," but we normally produce these in March traditionally. And she said, "Okay, okay. I'll have an answer for you soon." And it just kept going like that. And then I'm figuring, hey, they're too busy. We'll get them done along with all the other towns we do. And I came in with the decals and I dropped them off, and I submitted a bill. A week later, I get the bill sent back to me with written across it, "We're not using you this year," for no reason at all, nothing in particular. And, you know, this is quite shocking. Now, the proof I had submitted was a PDF graphic arts proprietary design, including the color, which is green this year, Pantone color. And the next thing I know, the artwork and design have been submitted to somebody, some other company in West Springfield, and they get produced using our design, proprietary design and artwork. I'm quite shocked by this behavior. In 51 years of business, I've had no town or city ever treat us with such abuse, with such callous, unethical behavior. So I am submitting a bill for our work, and you guys can do what you want. But quite frankly, it's disgusting. It really is. That's one. Two, what happened on April 2nd with your board, with this board? And the harassment, the slander, the libel that came out as I served on the Housing Authority and I had been bringing up as a whistleblower the things that are going on there, sewage backing up into first-floor apartments. Two and a half years it took to get the signal light to work. Your board, your board took two and a half years to correct that. And that's people with walkers and wheelchairs who are at risk. And I just don't get it. I don't understand. And then you turn it on me. You say I'm toxic for bringing up things that are going on over there and still going on, and then you remove me. I would like a formal apology for this. That wasn't a hearing. That was a tribunal. I wasn't allowed to defend myself at all. So those two things, you can do with as you wish. I'm not going to let them lie. So you can do the right thing. I would like a formal apology, and I'd like payment for my work.
As you're aware, we can't public, we cannot respond on public forums.
You guys chat.
So it has to be on the agenda. Okay, we're going to move to topic two.
Yeah, right.
Topic one. No consent agenda. Do I have a motion per the approval of May?
Motion to approve the May 27th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made. Motion seconded. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Under Posted Business, we have a request for a wage salary, rate adjustment request for DPW new hire. Is that correct, Andrew?
That is correct. We have two seasonal laborers. We have forms in your packet for both of them. One of those is Logan Bye, the other one is Gavin Rubio. Both of them will be summer help in the DPW. And this is their rate at the rate that we'd establish for the summer laborers.
Okay, we just have to approve this, right?
You just need to approve.
Any discussion from my colleagues on this?
No discussion. No discussion.
Okay, any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the seasonal rate adjustment for the two seasonal DPW employees.
Motion made. Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We just have to sign those. Okay, topic two. There's a rate request for water meter reading from $25 to $50. I think Tony might want to speak on this.
Yes, so go ahead, Tony.
In speaking with the collector's office, Dave increased their municipal lien certificate, which we had mimicked. Theirs was $25, and they went up to $50. And in talking with them, they felt it was corrected. We've changed water reading from $25 to $50 also, just to keep the same pace and stay with other towns. I mean, when I started reaching out to other towns, the cheapest I saw was $35, and it went up over $300 in one town. So I don't see $50 as being a problem when you're selling a house or whatever you need a meter reading for, because we do also do meter readings for landlords, too.
Any questions from you guys?
No, that makes sense. Why are you keeping up with that? I'll make a motion to approve the increase for the water meter reading from $25 to $50.
I'll second that. Motion made. Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Topic three, we're going to be moving into DPW candidates this evening. And the process will be, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we will interview each of the candidates. We will ask them all the same questions. And then after they've all been interviewed, we will be in deliberations here. And then after, if we find a selection and possibly determine whether or not we want a second in case the first one doesn't accept the salary or whatever happens, we will go into executive session for deliberations on strategy. So that's the game plan for this evening, I believe. That's what we got?
Yep, that's perfect.
Okay.
We do have some other business that we'll handle in between the interviews and deliberations, just.
Do you want us?
Do we want to move it around and do it?
Move it around, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll move to the other topics, then we'll get back.
Let's start with the interviews, just because we gave the candidates times to be here. So we can start with that, and then we can always, you can do deliberations and then go to the other business, however you want to do it.
Okay, our first interview will be with Tony LaSalle, who has put in for, is he going to be sitting here?
He's going to sit right here.
Okay, Tony, as many of you know, Tony is our Water Department Superintendent. And before I begin, I do want to thank the search committee, which was Andrew and Julie O'Connor, John Wilkes Jr., Jeff Sagronik, Eric Mills. I'd like to thank them personally, and if it's okay with my colleagues, I'd like to send them a letter of thank you for working on a search committee. So they've interviewed all these individuals, and they've chosen three to four to the board, and Tony is one of them. So how we do this doesn't matter. We can just take turns asking the same questions and see how that goes. So I got to get my questions out here. Tony, thank you for putting in for the position and showing interest. Thank you for being here. You got them? Okay, I got a copy. Fine. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so I guess we'll go in order. I'll start, then we'll go to Luke, and then we'll go to Greg, and then we'll just, and then where we end up, the next candidate, we'll just continue that way. Okay, again, Tony, welcome. This will be painless. Be, just relax.
Thank you.
This will be fine. From me, question number one is, please tell us about yourself and why you were specifically interested in being the Hatfield DPW director.
Currently, I'm the water superintendent. I also did hold the position of Highway and Water Superintendent in this town for many years. I've got a total of 31 years of municipal experience so far. And that's working as a mechanic, working as a water operator, working, doing construction. There's a lot of different things. I just saw this as an opportunity that we have a very young crew that they don't have a lot of experience in it. And I think I could actually add to helping them with some of their issues that they have, just by experience.
Thank you.
Explain one of the biggest challenges you have faced in your professional career and walk us through the process that you use to resolve it.
Personnel issues, I would have to say, and trying to come up with a game plan as to how to ratify things, how to make things work better, work as a team. Everybody's got different opinions on things, and sometimes personnel is the hardest to deal with.
Tell us about a large project you were responsible for managing. Describe your involvement from the project inception through its successful completion.
One of the first major projects here in town was the water transmission main that started at the treatment plant and ended up down on Route 5. That was an extensive project, working with the engineering firm from design, overviewing the design, or reviewing it, I should say, because certain things, it was like, this isn't going to work where we've got it placed. Trailer truck comes around the corner, it's going to wipe the fire hydrant out every time. Let's move it, you know, prior to final design. The funding, that was another interesting issue. But we did a lot of extensive work on that project, whether it was soil borings that we had to do, the blasting. But it was a very good project. I mean, it was extensive, and it was very expensive, but it worked well. Working with the contractors, constantly in touch with the engineering firm over progress reports, because we're constantly out there seeing what was going on. And instead of having an onsite engineer, it saved money by us doing it in-house. But the project went over well, over well, and we've continued on with that project and expanded it, as everybody can see on Chestnut Street.
Thank you. What are some of the biggest challenges facing public works departments now? And what do you think may be some of the biggest challenges in Hatfield specifically?
Employee shortage. Trained personnel, there's just not many out there. There's not a lot of blue collar workers coming into this kind of environment, whether it be water, wastewater, highway department. Everybody wants to sit at a computer and use the mouse all day long. They don't want to go out and get their hands dirty. So staffing is a very hard issue with us, or any town for that matter.
Thank you.
Tell us about a personnel issue that you have faced in the past, and how did you resolve the issue and move past it?
Haven't really had very many, to be honest with you. And obviously, everybody's going to butt heads at one point or another, but usually it's just ignore it for a little while, shake hands and get over your differences.
Thanks. What are some best practices for fostering employee accountability and managing the workload of employees?
Fostering employees.
Accountability.
The way I see it is the actual foreman or highway superintendent should be able to manage, or the water superintendent, wastewater, same, should be able to manage their own employees and accountability for them as to were they here, were they not here. I don't see that as a DPW director's position to go with every department every day and see who's here and who's not. Obviously, a heads up that an employee is out, that is key factor.
Tell us about your experience in applying for and managing grants. What is the largest grant project that you have been involved with?
I would have to say the Mass Works Grant. When we did the sidewalks here in town, I helped Phil quite a bit with that one. Then I've had multiple grants in the water department, whether it was for water conservation. There was a few other ones for water quality, just most recently with the timber operation. A lot of that came out of TCR, and there was federal funding that also went with it that we will no longer have as due to government cutbacks. So we're losing one of our funding sources going forward with the trees, but I don't think it's going to bother us.
So please describe your experience in writing and managing the department's budget.
Department's budget? I've been pretty much doing that along, all along, in different forms, working with Phil. A few years ago, me and Eric Mills changed a form over to make it look a little more user-friendly and started using that. I would plug in all the numbers, give it to Phil. Sometimes he'd make some adjustments to it, you know, because I'd have the reasoning why I want to increase electric budget or whatever. Ever Source told us, increase it by 20% this year. So we did. And, you know, that way, when I went to finance with him, there was a reasoning for doing the budget. But, I mean, this year, I submitted it to Andrew for the water department. I said, "Without coal increase," I says, "if you want, it'll take me about 30 seconds to upgrade it and send it back to you with whatever percentage." Doing the budget stuff is not an issue.
Thanks. What are some best practices you have for communicating with the general public, both with getting messages out to all residents and in following up on individual requests?
The electronic leash. I can't say it enough. We, I try my best with notification of the public. I mean, individual calls, yeah, can we go do this for a resident? That's easy stuff. When we do run into issues, it's like 4th of July night. We had a water main break. I only had one town employee here to help. There's nobody else around. I needed to send a message out, but I couldn't because Fire Chief wasn't out. But we try our best. During the day, yeah, usually there's somebody around. Karen's had multiple emails and phone calls from me to, "Hey, can you put this on the website?" "Did we get a water break?" or "This road's going to be closed," or whatever. But communication of getting the word out, we try our best.
The town recently completed its new comprehensive plan and is working on implementation now. How would you view the DPW director's role in helping the town when making this plan a reality?
I guess it would have to be on priorities and necessity of the projects or the needs going forward. It would have to be what facilitates that.
And finally, disposition is responsible for all town facilities, both for ongoing maintenance and capital repairs. How would you put together a realistic capital plan that acknowledges the town's limited funding for larger projects?
You'd be referring to like another roof at one of the schools or even on this building or something like that. I mean, I've worked in all these buildings. I was here through construction of this whole new addition. We did extensive repairs in the basement, you know, just to help out with the heating system. We constantly visit the high school and elementary school. Library, I've only been in there a couple of times, but to, I guess you'd have to meet with each department and see what things are looking like, possibly with the building inspector also, to see what their eye see that you don't and come up with a list of projects that you see coming up in the future.
Well, that sort of ends our questions, Tony, but at this time, I'd like to open it up to you if you wanted to add anything for us.
I see this as a great opportunity that, you know, I could help you guys out. I believe, I worked with everybody here so far. The communication that we've had has been phenomenal with Andrew. And I really appreciate that. We've continued to do our jobs, and I think it would work well. I mean, I know the townspeople, I know the buildings, I know people's personalities, I should say, with town people, and what we can do to make things better.
Well, I thank you for coming. The way the process is working, we have a couple more interviews. And hopefully tonight, we can come up with a consensus amongst us on our selection. And either way, you will be notified. I know Andrew has your address. And so, again, I want to thank you for putting your name in and.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, when is the next candidate, Andrew?
5:45.
5:25, so.
5:45.
5:45, so we could actually do those other topics in the meantime. All right.
And if he gets here early, we can start with him, whatever else.
All right. I'm going to move to topic four.
So topic four is consecrated by the notice that was given by our highway superintendent. So I'm recommending to the board to pursue two things at the same time. One would be the posting of that position. And I think our chair has said, and I think he's absolutely right, that the DPW director really should be weighing in on the process for choosing that person, but we can at least get it started by posting the position, seeing who our applicants are, and then having a pool of candidates ready to go for when the director comes on. And you can talk more about how you'd like to direct that process, if you want me to do initial screenings or just wait. We have a pool and can have the director get involved. All of that is fine. But I did print out the most recent version of the highway superintendent position. It's probably ripe for some revision, some changes, if the board wants to make some changes to it. But I think it mostly summarizes the responsibilities of the position well. And then, so that's the first thing, which is posting the position. And the second would be, we right now do not have a DPW director, and probably whoever we hire will take some time to come on. And then without a DPW highway superintendent, we do kind of have a vacuum of leadership there in that position. It would be, could be helpful, should the board decide to do so, to bring on an interim highway superintendent. And we, I did ask in advance if anyone was interested, and we do have two internal people who are interested in being considered for that interim position. One of their resumes is in your packet. That's Dwayne Mian, who is one of our heavy equipment operators and laborers, and then the town mechanic, Donnie Ballinger. And then the town mechanic, Donnie Ballinger, is also interested in that interim position. He did not submit a resume, but I'm sure you all know him as well. So those are the two items and of course the chair can decide how to take this conversation, but which one you want to talk about first?
Well, in my viewpoint, with you guys, the way I see this is gonna be temporary. And, and I feel it is important that the DPW director is the one that involved with hiring for this position because they have to be able to work together and get along. So right now Garrett had allowed or put into place Dwayne.
Meehan.
Meehan temporarily to do some of the responsibilities that he had because he's still on leave. He's still officially on the books till June twentieth. So, and I hear that Dwayne has been doing a good job as far as doing those responsibilities at this time. And it is temporary, we are gonna advertise. So my opinion at this time is possibly to move forward with Dwayne as being the temporary hire. And then when the DPW director gets on board, then he can determine who he's hired. That's, that's my opinion, but I'm gonna open it up to you guys for your discussion.
I agree. I think Dwayne's been doing a great job and that's who Garrett recommended. So. And he's, Dwayne's there right now. It seems like the logical move right now. I mean, he's kind of doing that job right now without the title.
I agree.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion then.
I just have one question. So. By enacting a, you know, an interim DPW superintendent, what happens? Obviously, there's a wage gap there that we would need to come to. How does that, how is that handled?
I'm recommending that when we do our executive session this evening, we can discuss that as well, essentially negotiate a, come up with a negotiation strategy and make an offer to him for what you think that that wage should be.
Okay.
And we can discuss that in executive session.
Sounds good. I'm good.
Any more discussion?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dwayne Meehan as interim DPW highway superintendent.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion? Al in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so then we move to topic.
So we're still on topic four because if you want to look through the job description, in case you're interested in making any changes to the job description. Unless you don't want to start the hiring process until the new director's on board.
It really, I mean, I think we should get it posted so that way we can start getting applicants in. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on a gray moment with that. I think we should post it. It doesn't hurt. Because I'm hoping we can select the DPW director tonight. And I'm hoping that he'll only require a few weeks' notice to take over the position, but I don't know if that to be true, so.
There was, that's right.
My only concern was the valid CDL, just what level that would be for, for our town. I don't know what level. If they're Class A or B that's required now.
Most other towns are requiring Class Bs. Most towns don't have As. I don't even think we have a. I mean, I guess with a combo, you could get into an A, but it'd be tricky. I think a B as a minimum would be a, a good.
Okay.
Would suffice. The only other thing that's not on here that I think should be is they should have their OSHA, at least their OSHA ten certification. And my only other, there's not really a, it says that they have to be able to respond 24/7 in emergency call. I know a lot of our other department heads that work in an emergent setting, there is a mileage restriction in terms of how far away they can live. I don't know if that's something we need to explore, depending on how far away we're gonna be getting applicants from.
I don't think that's an issue because the last DPW director lived in Westfield.
Correct, but this isn't a director's position. This is a superintendent's position. He would have to be working during an emergent thing. It's a little bit less management. So, you know, just as a, as a fire chief or a police chief might need to respond during a large call. You'd expect your superintendent to also be coming down for emergent, you know, emergent things that might come up. So. I know there's some other towns that do, you know, 15 air miles as the crow flies or 10 air miles, not necessarily road miles. But I think that's something that we should look at is how far out do we want this person living? And, you know, if there's a large gas leak or water main break or something like that. How quickly can they get back to help the situation? Is it a 10-minute response time or is it a hour and a half response time? So. Just my opinion. I think we should have some sort of radius from the town, what that is. I'm not dead set on, but.
Would you like me to research maybe what some other towns do for that position and can, can come back to you and maybe through the chair, just say, hey, here's what the consensus seems to be or?
That sounds, that's fair.
The other, the other way of looking at it, it's, you're absolutely right. There's a real balance here because you want the person to be able to respond. But it is also something that can potentially limit you from finding a candidate who otherwise is quite excellent. And, and maybe it's something that we feel flexible on. You could always say, put this radius in unless the select board offers a waiver or something.
Preference given to candidates that live within X amount of, you know, miles from Hatfield, you know, something like that. But I do agree, and a director's position is a different, different scenario. They're more administrative. They're here during the daytime. They don't need to come in at the drop of a hat, but a superintendent really, really should be.
Usually the highway boss is the one that's, you know, getting involved with the plowing or.
Right, and that's what this, this would be for, so.
Okay, any other comments on that?
No, otherwise I think it's all right.
I'm assuming our next candidate is present.
Yes. Do we wanna, I don't think you necessarily need a motion for posting this unless you.
No, I don't need a motion. No.
Good. All right, so I'll make those changes and I'll run language by the chair or the DPW liaison, whichever one you want.
That's fine.
The liaison?
The liaison would.
I'll run it by.
Yeah.
And get it posted. Very good. All right, we have our next candidate here. Marlo, you can come up and sit here. And so as I said, this is, this was listed as the third resume in your book. This is Marlo Warner.
Okay, so.
Good evening.
Marlo, welcome to Hatfield. Just relax, this is Be Painless. It's fun. What we're gonna do is just ask you like 10 questions. And at the end of the questions, we will ask you if you want to add anything to the interview. And then later this evening, we're hoping to select a candidate. You have, we have one more to go. And then you'll be notified with, by either, by Andrew, by either way, which we do, which, which way we go. So other than that, again, welcome to Hatfield and thank you for putting in for this position.
You're welcome and thank you for your time.
Okay, so last question was, was me, right?
I had asked a question. Do you want to show the same order?
Greg.
I'll be interested.
Hi, I'm Greg. Please tell us about yourself and why you were specifically interested in being the Hatfield DPW director.
Well, you know my name, Marlo Warner. I've been in construction going back approximately 31 years, about going on 29 years in municipal work DPW. Started low in the ranks as a laborer. Actually with a private excavating company once I got out of the Air Force. So worked my way up through the ranks in Greenfield. And well, in between, I worked my way up to the, to the ranks in Greenfield. But then I took a director's job in Hadley for two and a half years, got my start as a director. And then the opportunity opened up about two and a half years later to go back to my hometown, my home city, they call it now, Greenfield. And I've been the director there since October of 18. I, I appreciate DPW. I like the fact that the DPW interfaces with basically every department committee in a town or a city. Touches it in one way or another, especially working hand in hand with public safety, police and fire. So I pride myself on, on real good communication. I, I think that's important to the taxpayer, most important to the taxpayer, and of course it'd be the select board here. I have a 13-person city council in Greenfield and I work under a mayoral form of government. So as you can imagine, I get a lot of questions and there's a lot of constituents with the city councilors. I, I pride myself in being prompt, especially getting back to the taxpayer with an answer or if they have a question or whatnot. I also pride myself in running an efficient, safe, first of all, safe and efficient Department of Public Works. As you know, there, there's so much to deal with in a public works that's behind the scenes. There's so many regulatory changes constantly, regulations. Now we're under OSHA along with DLS, so there's a lot to pay attention to administratively as far as making sure everybody's trained, everybody's being safe. So on and so forth, so. That's kind of the quick bullet point on myself, but. And, and the reason I applied for the job is when I was in Hadley, I honestly miss this form of government. With the town meeting, working with a select board. I guess you could call it's more streamlined, streamlined if you will. You know, a, as you know, we're working under a mayoral form of government and 13 city councilors, there's a lot of moving parts. But I, I, I really like this form of government and that's, that's what really kind of made me enthusiastic to apply here. And I've done a little homework on the town too, on, on projects in the past, up and coming projects. So.
I want, I want to apologize for being impolite and not introducing my colleagues. This is Luke Longstreet and Greg Gagnon, so. And I'm Ed Jaworski, and Andrew and Karen. So I, I'm, I'm sorry for that. So my, my next question. All right. Explain one of the biggest challenges you have faced in your professional career and walk us through the process you used to resolve it.
While there's many challenges, I mean, I would say as a director of 60 people, I have 60 staff members under me in Greenfield, so. In eight divisions, so there's a lot of moving parts. So when you talk about the, the safety aspect, one of the, and also budgeting, one of the biggest challenges is when you're building budget. You're looking at the regulatory changes, usually get a heads up a year in advance, say in water and sewer. Some, sometimes like an example is water chemicals have gone up 40% in three years, four years. So the challenge is, is you have to really scrutinize that budget and you have to look out for the year. Once it gets sent up through, obviously through town meeting, that you're gonna, you're gonna have the funding you need to get you through the year. Five-year capital, that, that's another, it can be a tough one. I, I consider capital as, as a living document. You can say you have a five-year capital, but things change in that five-year capital. You could have a major problem with water mains, you could have a major problem at your wastewater plant, so that five-year plan kind of moves around. So that, that's one of the big, there's really two big challenges. You, you're budgeting because there's only so much of the pie to go around through a whole town or city, especially in this day and age. So, and then there's the personnel piece. Again, there's a lot that goes into safety, being efficient, so on and so forth, emergency response.
This falls under the topic of project management. Tell us about a large project you're responsible for managing and describe your involvement from project inception through its successful completion.
Okay, so there's been a few over the years. I have a couple going on as we speak in Greenfield. One of the, the larger projects that I started from, from the bottom up is we're currently installing a sludge press in our wastewater treatment plant. So obviously, the, the biggest thing about putting a project together, whether it be a, a general side project or water or wastewater. Is that you, you communicate, start by communicating well with your superintendents, their boots on the ground constantly. They can be very helpful in, in, in letting you know what you need for a project. You start there. Obviously, you have to build a scope of work and then you, obviously you have to get funding for the project. So. One of the things that can be a challenge, it can be a challenge is you're dealing prevailing wage and contractors usually with a large project. It's not done in-house, so you have to manage the project closely to ensure that it's moving along efficiently. And that you're staying within your budget without a ton of change orders unless they're necessary. So that can be a challenge in itself and then obviously closing out the project. Is, is a good thing on the other end. If you came into budget and there's no change orders, but. I, I've done many water main projects. I've directly overseen in Greenfield. Little different there, we, we did many water main projects with our own distribution crew. So I obviously would put the, the scope together, get the budgeting, and this is when I was a field superintendent working with the directors. Order, you know, procure, procurement for the, for the materials and supplies. And then organizing, organizing the project and overseeing it as the water mains are installed. I've done three or four fairly large water main projects in Greenfield, so. Timeline is important on any project. Nothing worse than keeping a, a road tied up for two years when it's supposed to be six months. So, you know, things do happen in construction, but. So the biggest challenge is to move projects along, you know.
I have a slight follow-up question. You mentioned both timeline, the budget and change orders and keeping a close eye on the contractors. What have you found is the most productive way to, to do that and keep everything flowing? Because we currently have a large project that is not doing any of those three things.
It's a five and 10 project.
It would, that would be it.
Yeah. Well, I, I think you have to be boots on the ground. You have to be present. You have to oversee the project. And you have to have good communication with the contractor. There should be a minimum weekly meeting with the contractor. You, you, you kind of, you know, you're in a timeline, you have to, it's the town's money. So the longer it goes on, obviously it becomes more expensive. We all know how materials and supplies have increased the last four or five years incredibly, blacktop alone. So I think that's important. You, you gotta be hands-on so to speak and you have to be a good communicator and get good communication from the contractor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What are some of the biggest challenges facing public works departments now? And what do you think may be some of the biggest challenges in Hatfield specifically?
So challenges today. I, I think it's a different workforce out there and I don't mean that in a negative way. There's just a lot, there's a lot less labor out there. I mean, you can read a lot of articles. It's a countrywide problem. And I, and I think you, you have to make sure you take care of the, the labor or the staffing you have because the, the pool is so thin out there. It's hard to come by today. Obviously, there's a lot of other different careers that young, young folks are getting into, so. That's one of the biggest challenges, I think, today. And excuse me, what was the second part of the question?
What do you think some of the biggest challenges in Hatfield can be specifically?
I, I think the challenges for me personally, if I were offered the position and I came aboard. I think, you know, the first couple of months, I would really have to understand the infrastructure. It's much different than Greenfield, I'm sure. It's smaller, but it probably has its quirks, idiosyncrasies. I'd definitely be evaluating the department. And, you know, from, not from afar, I guess is the wrong way to say it, but. I wouldn't make any major changes, changes coming right out of the gate, but I'd have to definitely get, get to know the personnel. I think respect is earned. So that would also be. I think respect is earned, so that would also be part of, if I came aboard, getting to know the staff and get that to happen, because there's your communication and there's your accountability and the workload.
Tell us about a personal issue you have faced in the past, and how did you resolve that issue?
Personal issue?
Personnel.
Personnel issue, my mistake.
Well, I've been doing this a lot of years, so there's, you know, there's minor to, you know, I've seen some major things too. Recently, we had an incident about three months ago with an employee that, let's just say, became mentally ill. It really wasn't caught, an incident happened at work. And again, part of the training with the staff and the supervisors, it wasn't your normal, somebody's upset that day, it was off. So we reported the supervisors, it was immediately brought to my attention, there's been a large investigation, it's taken quite some time, and at the end of the day, the decision is mine to whether that employee comes back or not. Good worker, very accountable, so on and so forth, so that's a tough one for me. You know, I can't really say much more about it, but it's tough when it's not a legit dismissal or something like that. I shouldn't say legit, but you're on the fence with it, you're not sure what to do with it, but at the end of the day, you have to make a decision.
What are some best practices in fostering employee accountability and managing the workload of employees?
So I, I'm not sure if you have a work order system in the DPW or not. If you don't, that's something that really should come into play because that's the accountability of the workload. It's also accountability to the taxpayer and the select board, the town administrator, where all the money's going. When you can track that work through a work order system, again, I don't know if there's one in place or not, but it also fosters the organization of, say, the highway department. If you track that workload, you know, you can go back, I can give, I could give a yearly report at the end of the year, hey, we did 500 work orders, some of them were five minutes, somewhere to the day it took, you know, say, patching potholes is a small example, or, you know, repairing a road. Again, I'm familiar with what you have for equipment, I mean, I do have your chart, thank you, Andrew. So again, I go back to, at the end of the day, people are human beings, but yet we're accountable to do our jobs. So you have to strike that balance, again, you have to earn the employees' respect, and that's the easiest way to, I feel, get the workload done. A work order system also makes it much easier rather than, you know, a book full of notes, what are we doing today? You can prioritize your work also. You know, if one of you all called me and said, hey, were we out on that little repair down on whatever street? Hey, I got it here, we're going to get to it at the beginning of the week or whatnot, or beginning of next week, this is what come up ahead of time, and this is kind of what's a priority or not.
Thank you. Please describe your experience in writing and managing a department budget.
Oh, okay. Well, when I was in Hadley, it's to my understanding you have Vadar here for the accounting system. I used that for two and a half years in Hadley, and then we have Munis in Greenfield, which is quite a larger program. You can do just about anything from HR to personnel to budget building, but I have five budgets in Greenfield that I write, and I usually start writing those budgets or researching them in September. You know, I got 450 accounts between five budgets. So it's due on my birthday, January 14th every year under charter, so happy birthday, the budget's in. So budget building for me, when you're talking water and sewer enterprise and you're talking in general, there's a lot that goes into it. Again, a lot of research, talking with the staff and the superintendents, and then throughout the year, going into building the budget for the year, you want to take some notes and tuck them away so you don't forget about certain things that you need in that budget that may come up, that you're not budgeted for that year. So I've been building budgets for about 10, 10 and a half years now, and then I was on the other side of it as the field superintendent, assisting directors build their budgets. So I take a lot of pride in really tearing the current budget I'm in apart and putting it all back together for the new year, making sure we don't miss anything.
What are some of the best practices you have used for communicating with the general public, both with getting messages out to residents broadly and then following up with individual requests?
So that, the individual request piece, obviously, if it came directly to me, I would directly reach out to the constituent. But as far as broadly to the, to the town here, I keep wanting to say city, I'm in a city, so, but I think the communication gets out in many, many different ways. Today, there's a lot of social media, I didn't even check to see if there's a Facebook page here. Obviously, I can get information out through the town hall, through Andrew, through the select board, and also written communications to the select board on, like, what are you doing now? You know, a monthly report, a bimonthly report to the select board, hey, this is what we did this month, this is what we're working on going into fall, we're getting plows ready, whatnot. So social media is the big thing, and then obviously through the government here, getting the word out, so.
Tell us about your experience in applying for and managing grants. What is the largest grant project you have been involved with?
So in Greenfield, we have a grants manager that writes most of the grants. I'm, right now, I'm administering four grants. The biggest one is a $2.05 million grant, but I wrote a few grants in Hadley, working with our grants writer in Greenfield. I've gained a lot of experience, at least in the knowledge, and these applications can be pretty, they can be dry, they can be tricky, they can be a lot of different things, so I certainly, I've written a few, and I definitely, grant management, I've done a lot of. The $2.05 million is from EPA that, believe it or not, didn't get cut, to go to single-stream recycling. That's one of my divisions in Greenfield. I still see a staff of eight at the transfer station. We have an active transfer station Tuesday through Saturday, and we pick trash and recycling off the routes daily. So we're going to dual stream to single stream, it came along with three brand-new automated trucks. Again, that's a big safety thing, health and safety for the drivers, they're not getting out at over 300 stops a day and dumping into the side bin, they're going to be riding the trucks with the, just like a video game with a joystick picking up a large toter, so. So there's a lot of grant management on there, it's a three-year grant, $800,000 off match from our end. So we have a team, I'm kind of heading up the team on that, but that's a lot of personnel hours and a lot of stuff we have to put in there. We're just over a year in now, so. I have some other smaller grants that I'm working on, IT compact grant to bring all our assets into one place in GIS, you know, our sidewalks, our signage, our roads. We've already did, we already had an asset management grant for our water and sewer, which we've gotten through that. So everything in GIS and whatnot in the layers in one place is a really good thing, especially for the help and anybody who wants to see the infrastructure, so. I could probably talk all night about grants, administrations. You've done this for a while, you think back, well, I can ramble all night, you know, there's a lot going on there, but...
All right, thanks. The town recently completed its new comprehensive plan and is working on implementation now. How would you view the DPW director's role in helping the town with making this plan a reality?
So I haven't reviewed the whole plan, but I think DPW would be instrumental when you talk about, you got a lot of things that could be part of that plan, I'm guessing, economic development, obviously, infrastructure, so on and so forth. So I think DPW director would be instrumental in working on instituting that plan, kind of like our master plan in Greenfield, I would guess, it's probably like that.
This position is responsible for all town facilities, both for ongoing maintenance and capital repairs. How would you put together a realistic capital plan that acknowledges the town's limited funding for big projects?
That's a good question. I would have to know the facilities, that would be obviously part of, if I came aboard, as far as the evaluation. I don't know if there's been any kind of feasibility studies on the town buildings. How many buildings are there, the responsibility?
Just have a few.
A few. So I think you have to understand the buildings, you have to understand the history of the buildings, you also have to know how old, you know, different utilities are, what you're, you know, what the outlook is. So I think it's a tough question, but I would have to evaluate the facilities unless there's been some sort of evaluation done on them, and then you pick up from there and you have to prioritize. You have to have heat, you know, you have to have, obviously, water, DPW would make sure that happens, but you have to have everything that makes a building go. I'm assuming some of the buildings are maybe pretty old, I know they aren't in Greenfield, but...
Well, that sort of ends our question, so at this point, we want to ask you if you have anything that you'd like to add to this interview.
I do want to say that the process has been, right up until just now, the process from applying to going to the search committee and coming here tonight has been quite pleasurable. I have to say that I feel very comfortable through the whole process. The search committee was very good, and I would hope at the end of the day, I may have the opportunity to come work for you.
Okay, the way it is, is we have one more interview, correct? And then we hope to make a decision tonight, and then we will contact you one way or the other, and then if you're selected, we would go into negotiations and et cetera, et cetera. So I do want to thank you for coming here and applying for this position, I appreciate it, I do think you did, you have a lot of experience.
Yeah. I did want to say that, I didn't bring up integrity, but I think I've carried myself all through life with good integrity, and that means a lot in a position like this. It means a lot to me.
Any other follow-ups?
Excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
You as well.
What time is our next one, Andrew?
6:30.
6:30, so...
We have some time to hit the rest of the agenda, I think.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It could very well be early, so we'll see.
So, okay, we'll go a couple topics, and then we'll take like a 15-minute break until our next interview, because we only have a couple topics to run through. So topic five is, Andrew, you want to discuss, there's something about town hall hours?
I do. So I put a little brief memo together that's in your packets to review. Basically, we're looking at the possibility of adjusting town hall hours, at least piloting this during the summer, it might only be a summer thing, but look at a summer Fridays schedule. Right now, town hall is open until 4:30 PM on Fridays, we have the same schedule every day, 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, and we're finding that Friday afternoons are both very quiet with the number of residents coming in and looking for services and in the number of employees who are here. Since we do have a number of part-time employees across a number of our departments, and then our clerk's office keeps their own schedule, they're open Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, so they're already closed on Friday. And then if anyone's looking to use, say, vacation time on Fridays during the summer, we end up with maybe only two or three people in the main area of town hall. Council on Aging is kind of doing its own thing, and we can bring them into this conversation as well, and kind of talk about how that might work. But when it comes to just town hall proper, we end up with very few people here, usually two or three in the afternoons on Fridays. So we're looking at both how to best serve residents, if, you know, they're not coming in here on those Friday afternoons, are there other times that might be better for them, for town hall to be open? And we're also looking to make sure that employees are here at a time that makes sense to be serving people and can do their jobs properly. So we have a proposal to open town hall at 8:00 AM, Monday through Friday. Our executive assistant, Karen, is already here at that time, and she handles, you know, both select board and board of health, and treasurer's office, staff are generally here at 8:00 AM. Actually, some folks are here much earlier than that, but definitely by 7:30 or 8:00. So we could comfortably open town hall at 8:00 AM, they would get the service they need from the treasurer's office, and then Karen kind of serves as a public face for most other departments during that time. And then we would open on Fridays from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. So this would slightly limit the amount of time that town hall is overall open, you'd be looking at a two-hour decrease, but at the same time, people aren't really coming here at those times on the afternoons on Fridays for the most part. And then individual staff would still need to work the same number of hours. So most of them would like to make those hours up in the morning, they would start at 7:30, Monday through Thursday, and they do 8:00 to 12:00 on Friday, and that would be the same number of hours for those folks. So that's the general broad proposal, I'm happy to talk through, you know, what you think might potentially work for this.
How would that affect the Council on Aging?
We'll need to talk to them, they have their own entrance, and, you know, it would be up to them if they want to just keep the same hours that they do, and already in town hall, people are working at different hours, they open later than town hall, they open usually at 9:00, I believe, and then they're running their programs at their time, so I would need to talk to them about what they'd like to do for timing.
So I guess I'm having a hard time understanding. Your plan is to officially open the town hall at 8 o'clock?
Yep.
But leave it up to individual people to come in at 7:30, but the town hall's not open for business?
Right now, we have folks who are working, you know, much earlier than that, they come in early anyway, and they're not necessarily credited with those hours, so...
Why would we not just open the town hall at 7:30 then?
You know, we could. I just wasn't quite sure if the treasurer's office wanted to commit to that for being open to the public at that time, but I think we could potentially, that's something I can talk to them about. We could open at 7:30 officially. The question is, their work time could also include just some time to be doing their own, you know, catch-up work without necessarily being open for residents coming in, you know, working on their own projects or anything else, but, you know, if there's an expectation that if they're here, they're able to serve residents, we could certainly do it that way too. I think it's, either one is understandable.
Yeah, I guess my only concern is that, you know, if they're here, it should be able to be open, right? So, and it holds, I think it holds people a little bit more accountable, if the building's open...
And they're working.
And there's people who are able to come in, they're going to be at work for 7:30.
Yep.
Not that, you know, the office opens at 8:30 and there's two residents waiting for the door to get unlocked because they just walked in. So that would be my feeling, is that if we're going to allow staff in and to be credited hours from 7:30, then the building's open at 7:30 as well.
I think we already kind of do that, we already have employees coming in early before it opens. It doesn't open until 8:30 now, and a lot of employees are here an hour ahead of time as it is, and they've done that on their own to get their work done, and I don't know that we've had any requests from the public to open it any earlier than that for any reason.
We certainly could if, or say, limiting the hours on the Friday afternoon, they might want to see the same number of hours if the building is open. Some folks might appreciate the early, yeah.
Well, we're moving it back a half hour as it is.
Right, we are.
So... So it'll be open in a half hour longer on the other days, Monday through Thursday. It would only be Friday that would affect.
Yep.
So we're already making a move to have it open a little earlier, the way it is.
Right, but you still have to make the 40 hours up.
Right.
Right.
It's a question of, should 40, the 40 hours include time when, say, staff are here but the building isn't open? If their job hours really should include when people are able to come visit them and work on, and visit town hall for anything they need.
Their job hours would still have to start at 7:30 for them to make their 40 hours.
It would.
It's just whether or not the building is open at 7:30 or 8:00 is what is the question.
Yep, exactly. So I think it's a reasonable comment.
Yeah.
If they're going to be working, have the building open.
But also for families who are dropping their kids off at school and then need to swing through and want to pay their water bill or something like that, it might aid inconvenience. I know for me personally, earlier in the morning for things to be open, I can attend to stuff a little easier than, you know, having to make a trip back at 9:00 or something like that. So I think depending on what your lifestyle is, the earlier mornings would be beneficial for a lot of people.
I mean, I can go either way in this. I mean, I know the staff, I trust the staff on their opinion and summer hours, it's a little bit different with traffic in here and I know what they're saying, so I, I mean, I guess what we're saying basically is open 7:30 and if they want, and then less hours on Friday.
Yep. It could work.
Is that an agreeable?
Are you comfortable with 7:30 AM to 4:30, Monday through Thursday, and then Friday would be 8:00 to 4:00? I think that's, sorry, 8:00 to 12:00? 8:00, open at 8:00 rather than 7:30?
Yeah, I think that's fine because that's, that's the way the math works too, so.
Good.
And this is just for the summer?
We would pilot it the summer, see what residents think if we get, but most likely we'd, you know, I think we got more people here in the afternoons when it's not summer.
I haven't, I haven't received hardly any feedback on people not being able to get to the town hall because a lot of them do it online now, their bills, so.
Yep.
And then there is phone calls or emails and so there's, there's a couple different ways to communicate to the staff and the staff's been good getting back to everybody too, so. I don't know, have you heard any issues of anybody that was upset that it wasn't open at a certain time or anything like that?
I think actually Karen's been a big reason for why I felt comfortable with this forward because she said that we do get a lot of people who are interested in being here earlier in the day.
Okay, perfect.
When we're open, there's folks who try to come in if we're open early.
So do you need a, do we need a motion on that?
I have consensus with the staff too. Is everyone pretty much in favor of this? Is this?
So the folks who are the most affected are those who are, say, you know, the full-time people in the offices that are open every day and they're on board with this. You know, we already have offices that set their own hours, so if there's, there's people who would rather, you know, not open at a time, then we can work it out. But if we say town hall is open, that means that people will be able to go to the treasurer's office and then town administrator's office, which I think are the ones that most people are coming to for the most part. And then our building inspector has his own hours and then I think planning will be able to cover these hours pretty easily. So we should be in good shape.
Great. Yeah, do we need a motion or no? Do we need a motion, no?
I don't think you would have to have a motion. I think that would be within my purview to be able to.
Okay.
Get the hours.
Perfect.
Sounds good to you?
Sounds good.
Great.
So that sort of ends our topics until our next interview. So we will take a break down until our next interview.